Welcome to Spokane City Council Legislative Session. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, could you please call the rule?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Wilkerson is absent.
All right. And we have some poetry at the podium this evening. Alyssa Ball is here to read "South of St. Pat's." Right, yeah, that one right there. Thank you.
Good evening. All right, this is about the Hilliard neighborhood where my Nana used to teach kindergarten at St. Pat's. "South of St. Pat's. Under the backyard bird feeder, shells of sunflower seeds flung with quick joy form a complete dark circle. A jealous squirrel on a nearby wire observes the feasting birds. Below the squirrel, half-hidden by a bush, a black cat twitches her tail to the bird's chirps. The animals are the stars of this show that Nana watches from the kitchen window as she scrubs a pot soaked in baking soda water. Outside or in, they're all neighbors lit by the same sun, whose angle says kids are about to walk home from school and pepper the sidewalk with laughter." Thank you.
Thank you. And I did just want to take a moment of personal privilege. In the last week, in a few days, we have been beset by great violence across the country, the University of Virginia, Moscow, Idaho, Seattle High School, most recently Colorado Springs, and Trans Day of Remembrance, remembering many others. And I just hope that you can join me in a moment of silence and reflect on the words of a great teacher that calls us all to be the change we want to see in the world and hope that we can get to that day. So if you'd join me with a moment of silence for those that we have lost and those that Thank you. We do have an administrative report today from Shane Gronholz from the Spokane Library, who's going to give us an update on happenings at the library. Welcome.
President Beggs and members of the council, thank you for giving me some time to share today. You've probably seen me at the council meetings recently, and maybe you're sick of me, and like, who is that guy? So that's what I'm going to talk to you about. So I wanted to take a few moments to introduce myself to the council, as well as to the community, and talk about my new role at Spokane Public Library. So I was hired as part of the library, expanding some of its programming options. In library world, programming basically means stuff that you show up to do, and as opposed to like books or access to technology and things like that. And the library has always offered programming, but they've recently expanded that. And one thing they've done is they've done some new hires and assigned people specialties based on their experience and expertise. For instance, we recently hired Sharma Shields as our writing specialist. Maybe some of you have read some of her books. We also have a youth environmental specialist and a youth arts specialist and several others. My role, however, is current affairs specialist. And so that means I'll be offering programming on, yes, current affairs. So basically, anything that might like show up in the newspapers would be fair game for me to offer programming on. My background is in philosophy, of all things. I have a PhD in philosophy, and I've taught on a wide range of topics, but primarily in social, political, and legal philosophy. And so with this background, I'm very interested in the world of ideas and of dialogue. And we, as a city and as a country, as you are well aware, we have a lot of problems that need solving. And the way we do that, in part, is by thinking, and especially thinking together. You might be familiar with the phrase from the Book of Isaiah, "Come, let us reason together." That's sort of one of my life mottos. So what I'm going to be trying to do is create spaces and platforms that allow us to do that, to reason together. And that, in part, among other things, means listening to each other. And it means encountering and engaging ideas that are new to us, that might be different, that might even make us uncomfortable. So I'm going to be trying to create a forum or a town square, something like that. I don't know if any of you have ever come across Seattle City Club, but I really admire the kinds of stuff that they do there. All of this is pretty abstract, I realize, so I'll give you a couple of examples of the kind of programming we're doing. Last month, we had the outgoing director of Boundary County Library. They're not all going to be about the libraries, but this one was. So Kimber Glidden, if you read about that, she was sort of the subject of a campaign of harassment and intimidation that eventually led to her, you know, she quit, basically. And so she came to talk to us about her experiences there. A few weeks ago, we had Gavin Cooley, Ben Stuckert, and Chris Patterson come talk about what they've learned from Houston and how Spokane might learn about how to address homelessness from what Houston has done. I also moderate workshops on depolarization. So earlier this month, I led a workshop on how to navigate those contentious family political conversations at Thanksgiving. We had Range Media come in to do an event on ranked choice voting, which was a little bit in the weeds, but I thought it was incredibly interesting. On December 4th, we have Mike Gavariachi, who's an Iranian refugee. He's going to come in and share some of his experiences about why he had to flee Iran and how that's related to the protests that are going on there. And on December 8th, we have representatives from the Upper Columbia United Tribes coming in to talk about their work reintroducing salmon into some of the local waters, and lots more ideas coming up. So as I said, I really want cooperation and sort of buy-in from the community. So if you have, and so this is sort of for everyone, if you have something to say, something to teach, a discussion you want to have, that's what the library is for, that's what I'm here in particular for in particular. And I really view this job as a public service, so I want the programs to be responsive to what people want. So please do give me your feedback and suggestions. My door is always open, so to speak, and that's what I'm up to at the library. So thank you for the time today.
All right. Thanks for coming, Shane. Thanks for all you do. All right. First thing up is the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase from Hughes, Orlando, Florida of CCTV ban for wastewater maintenance, $470,000. Number two, special counsel contract amendment number one with Craig Tubel of the law firm K&amp;L Gates LLP Spokane for outside counsel services regarding the litigation between the City of Spokane and the Washington State Department of Ecology. Additional $100,000. Total contract amount, $150,000. Number three, master services agreement renewals, two of two for heavy equipment body repair services for the fleet services and fire departments from December 1, 2022 through November 30, 2023 with A Fleet Painting Incorporated Spokane not to exceed $450,000 plus applicable tax. B Kenworth Sales Spokane not to exceed $50,000 plus applicable tax. Number four, consultant agreement with Consor North America Incorporated Houston, Texas for onsite chlorine feasibility study to examine the feasibility of retrofitting existing gas chlorination systems with onsite sodium hypochlorite generation from December 5, 2022 through April 5, 2023, $148,400 plus applicable tax. Number five, interim local agreement amendment with Spokane Transit Authority, STA, to reflect updates to the payment structure, as well as reiterate each party's duties and responsibilities from December 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023, not to exceed $117,800. Number six, contract with Washington State Department of Commerce to accept grant funds to support utility bill customers with delinquent accounts related to the pandemic. $1,880,473.92 relates to special budget ordinance C 36326. Number seven, agreement with HIP of Spokane Doing Business as Community-Minded Enterprises in conjunction with the 2022 Child Care Program Grant, $3,500,000. Number eight, agreement with Inland Northwest ACG Apprenticeship and Journeyman Training Trust Spokane Valley, Washington in conjunction with the Pre-Aprenticeship Program Grant, $200,000 for 2022 to 2023 with option to renew, $200,000 for 2023 to 2024. Number nine, report of the mayor of Pen A, Claims and Payments of Previously Approved Obligations, including those of Parks and Library through November 11, 2022. Total $7,313,199.86 with Parks and Library Claims approved of the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $6,691,279.92. B Payroll Claims of Previously Approved Obligations through November 12, 2022, $9,296,296.35. Number 10, city council meeting minutes for November 7, November 10, and November 17, 2022.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, consent agenda has passed. That brings us to special budget ordinances.
Ordinance C 36325, amending ordinance number C 36160.
Oh, sorry. We had one person to testify, but remotely on the consent, so we have Susan Meyer on the phone. If you want to hit star three, comment. All right, Susan, apologies for that. Didn't see you here, but go ahead. You have up to three minutes.
Thanks, Council President. Members of the council, this is Susan Meyer. I'm the CEO at Spokane Transit, and I'm here just to share my brief comments with you on the amended interlocal agreement between STA and the City of Spokane for SPD services, and you have just approved it. So that means I can be even briefer in my update to tell you that the Board of Directors approved the interlocal agreement at its last meeting last week. I'd like to acknowledge that serving on the STA board from the City of Spokane are Councilmember Kinnear, Stratton, Wilkerson, and Zepone, along with five other elected officials from the county and the cities in the public transportation benefit area. There has been a long and productive relationship between STA, the city, and the police department, and we share the collective role of creating and maintaining a safe and comfortable environment downtown, around the plaza, elsewhere downtown, for riders, workers, visitors, and STA employees. So the difference in this interlocal agreement acknowledges the limited commissions that STA officers used to have, eliminated by the chief, therefore also the training. It retains a full-time police officer at the plaza and details how that is to be paid, and it reduces parking in the plaza garage. For the number of precinct officers, down to three, and retains a space for the full-time officer. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, but having already approved it, I'm going to guess that you won't, but appreciate your vote in favor of the amended interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan, for that explanation to us and for all your service and how amazing STA is operating these days. We'll talk to you soon. All right, now we're at the SBO.
Ordinance C 36325, amending ordinance number C 36161, passed by the city council December 13, 2021, and entitled. In ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in. Fire EMS Fund One, increased revenue by $350,000. A of the increased revenue, $350,000, is provided solely for wildfire mobilization reimbursement from the Department of Natural Resources. Two, increased appropriation by $350,000. A of the increased appropriation, $350,000, is provided solely for overtime and travel costs of firefighters deployed to wildfire events. This action arises from unbudgeted costs related to responding to regional wildfire mobilizations.
All right. And for this SBO, the next two, we have people who have signed up in support, but they don't want to testify. So is there any council member testimony or comment? All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes six to zero.
Ordinance C 36326, Utility Billing Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $1,880,474. A of the increased revenue, $1,880,474, is from the Washington State Department of Commerce as funding for utility residential customer arrearsages grant program. Number two, increased appropriation by $1,880,474. A of the increased appropriation, $1,880,474, will be used to credit utility bill customer accounts who meet Commerce's qualifications. This action arises from the need to accept newly awarded Department of Commerce grant funds.
And this is the state giving us close to $2 million to help residents who owe the city money for their city utilities of water, garbage sewer. The qualification is that you're already qualified for some aid, but we have, I don't know, $5 to $8 million of unpaid bills out there that we're trying to handle, so this will help us quite a bit. If I recall, it's about 2,100 accounts that will be brought up to speed, so that will help. Councilmember Stratton.
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Marlene Feist and her utility team. They've worked so hard on this, and it was a lot of work with numbers and trying to get information. So thank you to Marlene, and I'm happy to support this.
All right. Any other council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes six to zero.
Ordinance C 36327, American Rescue Plan Fund. Number one, increased appropriation by $125,000 funded from the city's direct allocation of the state and local fiscal recovery fund of the American Rescue Plan Act. A of the increased appropriation, $125,000, is provided for the purpose of funding for capital expenditures for a city-owned firehouse safety center. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority for funding one-time costs to improve fire safety.
Councilmember Cathcart, do you want to tee that up?
Yeah. Yeah, so this is related to the firehouse, children's safety firehouse, and it's a, I think it's a great program. I had the opportunity to experience something very similar when I was in elementary school, and it's just a great way for kids to learn about fire safety. And yeah, so it'll be great to get a new one for our fire department.
All right. Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes six to zero. That gets us to resolutions.
Resolution 2022-0101, expressing city council's intent to fund current homelessness shelter and service providers prior to funding new shelter beds and declaring unassigned revenues in the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund and previously approved ARPA funds available for sheltering services.
All right, we do have several people signed up to testify on this one, and so I'm going to give my little introduction about testifying. I see most of the people here have testified before, but you'll have up to three minutes. And when there's one minute left, the light will turn yellow, and then when it turns red, your time is up, and I'll ask you to sit down. We ask people in the audience, even though we applauded the poet who is here tonight, we don't do any applause or boos or make any sounds or disruption so that everyone can speak their mind and their truth without feeling like they're going to get audible feedback that might be distracting. That includes no sign-wavings, but buttons and stickers are okay. Also, we ask that you address your comments to myself as the meeting chair and that you not make any denigrating comments about anybody here or in the room, or actually anywhere, ideally. And we'll just go through that. So what I do is I'll call the first person up, and then I'll call the next couple, and they can sit in the front row, so you're just ready to go, so we don't have a lot of time in between speakers. And Sunshine, I don't know if you wanted to testify. If you come on down, Sunshine. And then Anton after Sunshine, and then Brian Parker. And we also ask that you let us know what city you live in. Welcome, Sunshine. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Sunshine, and I'm from Spokane. And so the Hope House is, we petitioned for three years to get that opened back in, when it was opened. And the first week that it opened, I had pneumonia so bad, and I didn't qualify for the hospital to pay for my medicine because I had already used the charity funds. And so anyways, the hospital, doctors put their money together and bought me the medicine because I had been in there nine times with this pneumonia. And so I called my mom, and I'm like, hey, Mom, please help me. I'm in dire straits. She's, oh, you just go, you go get out of here, you know, don't, don't talk to me. Anyway, so the Hope House had just opened. It was its first week, and they saved my life. The doctors bought me the medicine, and the Hope House saved my life by giving me a bed there. And it's a very important place to me because it is the only shelter I use. So, and I have to be deathly ill to use it. So I just wanted to speak about that. And those staff have helped raise me because they've moved from Volunteers America from, at Crosswalk, like Bridget and stuff. And so it's just a really important place to me, and I wanted to say that. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, Sunshine. All right, Anton? Oh, sorry, Anton, you said that, that's my fault. Brian Parker next, and after Brian is Crystal Burgett, and then Rayland Barden. Welcome, Brian.
Hi. I hope I'm here for the right item. I presented myself to your staff, and they said, sign here. So in general, I'm supportive of continuing funding of the Hope House. I was a volunteer at the Women and Children's Family Restaurant and brought them food every week and really admired the staff and the residents there. And it'd be, you know, it's invaluable services to the community. And broader, speaking on a broader topic, very concerned about city leadership, thinking we should take the housing levy money that we put in place back in November of 2020, kind of a long-term, help solve the problem, make some progress on it, versus crisis-oriented, always trying to find the last buck because we have all of our problems, and taking it and immediately, you know, applying it and kind of for, I think, a different purpose than we all thought it was going to be adopted for. And I'm a good, moderate Democrat, not always in favor of tax increases, and was convinced by some of my friends that that was an appropriate use, and I think it is. But I have a lot of problems, heartburn, thinking we would take that money and put it into an operational sense. And it's kind of the robbing Peter to pay Paul approach, just in general, of our homeless funding and dealing with the crisis that we have is very disconcerting. And I can't imagine how the city, you know, and the leadership in the mayor's office, can think that we can provide leadership when we're doing things like that, because I think it's the opposite of leadership. I think that you have to scratch your head and wonder what they were thinking, some sort of Game of Thrones thing where we'll have this pot of money, and we're going to fund the city programs first and potentially abandon these existing institutions that have served people so well. And, you know, combined with all the other ineffective housing, lack of housing leadership, losing key staff, reading that 27-page memo from Mr. Hall about his three-month experience here, and all the funds that are at risk because we're not following through, I just cannot understand what's going on down here. And I, I look to the council for leadership, people I agree with on everything and people I don't agree with on everything. I think you've got to, like, take a, take that leadership role and put us back on track, and this would be taking us off-track if we, if we defunded these programs. And I appreciate you guys taking the initiative with your, setting some priorities. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Brian. Crystal, and after Crystal, Rayland Barden, and then Jonathan Mallion. Is Crystal here?
She says she's going to pass.
Oh, you're going to pass? Okay. Thanks, Crystal. Rayland, and after Rayland, Jonathan.
Excuse me. Council President, I am here representing VOA, and I'm going to read a letter that was sent to Council President Beggs, along with Mayor Woodward, that was signed by Family Promise, Catholic Charities, VOA, and Truth Ministries. We write this letter as the four emergency shelter providers who will lose beds and close facilities at the end of the current year if funding, proposed funding levels are not addressed. In the past few years, the city has done its best to serve our most vulnerable despite COVID challenges and staffing shortages. The providers in the community have tried to meet the challenges as well, but the current plans released by the city highlight some serious concerns we will share around equity and consistency. None of the numbers or concerns should come as a surprise. The administration's plan, as far as we can tell from communication and memorandum, see to be as follows. Utilize low-income housing sales tax, last ARPA funds, and criminal justice funds totaling $11 million to fund the tran facility at $6.6 million. Fund Canon 100% at $2 million, and then have the RFP that we're speaking tonight at the $2 million. Between Hope House, House of Charity, Family Promise for family and infant, Truth Ministries, and the Young Adult Shelter, if we do not receive the $5.5 million, we will lose 319 shelter beds. The loss of this number of beds in our system will be staggering and put Spokane's homeless system back decades. Each of these shelters operate Each of these shelters operate with a combination of private and public funds. The above reflects those beds that would be lost without city funding, what I just referenced. We're asking for equity. Is it equitable to fully fund brand-new shelters while legacy operators who provide matching private dollars are left to compete over insufficient funds? Transparency, how was the process for prioritization arrived at? There was no conversations with current providers. Process, current providers are currently owed hundreds of thousands of dollars from previous awards and operating for as long as four months without signed contracts, essentially providing the city with no interest loans. Cost, how can legacy operators with little city funding operate at half the cost when the newer Trent shelter, where is the money going? And we also identified funding sources and ask for equity and transparency moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayland. Jonathan Mallahan, welcome back to City Council.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to share a little bit of Catholic Charities' perspective on shelter funding. We want to speak tonight in favor of the council's resolution prioritizing funding for existing shelter operations before funding new sites. Now, to be clear, that's not a vote against funding new sites. It absolutely is critical that we continue to invest in affordable, excuse me, emergency housing solutions for our community. Catholic Charities, based in Washington, provides over 200 beds each night for individuals and families who are experiencing homelessness. We've been operating shelters in the Spokane community for over 50 years. We've long been advocates for more funding and support of our homeless neighbors, and we support the city's efforts to expand shelter capacity. We share the concerns of our partners, that funding new shelters should not come at the detriment of our existing system. We can't afford to lose those critical beds that serve men and women now. We're asking for a thoughtful process to prioritize shelter funding, to first preserve existing shelter beds before funding new facilities. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jonathan. Council commentary. Councilmember Cathcart.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Do you?
The Senate chief was polled before I got here.
Let me ask my councilmembers here.
We have to let him speak.
Okay, I'm just, because it's...
Yes. Yeah, we do.
I'm all for letting him speak, but I will note, last week, we made the exact opposite decision.
Yes, we did, but this is different.
Former council president, so I'm just checking, because...
Thank you, Mr. Cathcart.
All right.
I'm just here to propose to this council, think of a new way outside the box to fund affordable housing and the homeless programs. Mirroring the city of Houston, which has named a nonprofit to run their nonprofit housing programs, I recommend that this council consider an outside agency to manage the city's housing and affordable, homeless and affordable housing programs like Houston. If they were willing, I would recommend this council consider contracting out to the Empire Health Foundation, who has the money, the muscle, and the independence to run this program in an efficient manner, under the supervision of whoever the department head is now that concerns the city with those programs. And perhaps this agency would be able to salvage the $30 million or so that's sitting in the city coffers or waiting to be returned for lack of disbursement. I recommend that the four major agencies that provide shelter for the homeless, Catholic Charities, Salvation Army, Walters of America, and Union Gospel, be entered into five-year contracts with a basis of whatever determination is made before this current coming year. These agencies have been providing services here for over 50 years. It's ridiculous to make them go every year through the same process, starting at zero. The contracts could be reviewed annually to either go up or go down, but they should not start at zero. You've already heard how many shelter spaces are provided, and this doesn't include the studio apartments, which I think right now house over 800 to 1,000 people. In other words, these nonprofits are doing the city's business, but they're not accorded an annual budget like other city department agencies are. Pearl Buck said, "The true measure of a society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable." I challenge this council to correct the non-functioning way we continually fund these agencies. We leave them hanging out, and you make them start like they're just brand-new. So I challenge you to think outside the box and take advantage right now of the involvement in the Empire Health Foundation and, for instance, Hope House. Thank you for your courtesy. Thank you, Mr. Cathcart.
Thank you, Mr. Shogun. For those of you who don't know Mr. Shogun, he's served as council president previously, and we thank you for your service for that. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, and our former council president, I think, shared a little bit of where my, my thinking is. First off, I'm going to support the resolution, just to be clear, but I think it, we need to, I think, clarify some things. You know, I've heard some comments that we are potentially defunding or abandoning, and I just, it's hard to defund or abandon something that you don't actually have a commitment to fund, and I think that's the difference. And so I think what we have to do is we have got to come together, in fact, there was a provider meeting last week to start this conversation, but we have got to come together and look for ways to create efficiencies amongst providers, create that independent agency, as the former council president was talking about, that would sort of be that umbrella under which everything would exist. Now, I think the different tact I would take is, I don't think that can be successful as a city agency with just the city involved. I think the reason that we're not able to address the homelessness issue that we have is because it's not regionalized, and that's the only way we are going to have an outcome that, that actually solves some of these problems. And so I agree, but it's got to include Spokane, Spokane Valley, the county, Liberty Lake, Arway Heights, I mean, all these other entities have got to be a part of that master plan because without everybody at the table, there's no way the city of Spokane can solve this on our own. But we do need that independent, nonprofit, separate agency to help lead it, I believe, and that's going to take a lot of work, a lot of strategy, a lot of conversation, a lot of public dialogue to get to that point. We're not there today, and so, so I agree, we have to look and see, can we find some ways to fund some of these things and keep them going? Because while I believe, you know, we don't have commitments or anything else, it does, it is important that we find a way to keep these afloat, because otherwise, the impacts on our city and the region will be pretty considerable, not to mention the folks who are experiencing homelessness and losing out on the services and those sorts of things. So I think it's really important, but folks also have to understand, we are in a budget mess that you, I mean, it's, it's really hard. And, and so I know a lot of folks are here, we're probably going to hear from you a little bit later on the 1590 topic, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I am strongly in agreement with what you guys are going to say on that topic, but, you know, the fact is, we have got to find dollars, and we have to find dollars to make these things work and to make them work in a sustainable way. I don't know that that is possible in our current environment and the current situation that we face, but I know that all of us, I think, are committed to trying to find a way to make that happen. And my hope is that we can find some way of keeping some things afloat while that long-term strategic plan, some additional outreach for other possible revenue sources outside the city are looked at. I mean, it's got to be a whole lot of, you know, all hands on deck to, to solve this, but there's got to be a real, long-term strategy that comes out of this, because we can't be back here again in next November, talking about the same, you know, how do we fill this gap for one more year, one more year? That just doesn't work. So we've got to, we've got to solve this, and that needs to be our goal for '23. So anyway, happy to support this, but again, I don't know that it will, in fact, make exactly the difference.
Other council, councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. So thanks, all of you who testified. I absolutely agree, agree with every one of you, that we cannot abandon our long-term providers. Four years ago, three of us on council at the time passed a resolution stating that we absolutely wanted a regional approach. The administration at the time, half-heartedly, tried to get people to coalesce and come up with a solution. Nothing happened. Here we are, it's four years later. We're now talking about a Houston model, and I think it's, it's doable. I think if we all come together and admit that it is a regional problem, that is half the battle. So when I talk to folks in Liberty Lake, I talk to people of City of the Valley or Cheney, "We don't have a homeless problem," they'll say. Well, yes, you do. Those are folks that have lived in your, in your towns and your cities and are now in Spokane because you have no services. It's a regional problem, and we have to come together as a group, put the politics aside, because this is not political. This is about humanity and about making sure people are safe in our community. So I am going to support this absolutely, and I am going to work, this is my commitment to all you. My, my assistant is out of town for a week, and he's saying, Lori, just keep a low profile, you don't want to get... And I'm going, nope, we're going to, we're going to go whole hog on this, and I absolutely am going to go in with all fours and try and get something started so that we're at least having the conversation as a community, as a group, and can agree that it is a community problem, a regional problem, and we can find solutions, put the politics aside. So again, thank you all for coming, and I absolutely will support this.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Schratt.
Just following up on Lori's comments, I do plan to support this. I support it 100%. The thing that is, I think, has been so difficult for councilmembers, this is a huge, I mean, we all know, that's why we're here tonight, this is a huge deal. We have been dealing with, we've got the homelessness, we've got the new shelters going, we have people on both sides of the issue, and it's, it's either going to tear us apart as a community, or it's going to bring us together. And I, I hope it brings us together. My biggest disappointment tonight is, because this was on the agenda, I was hoping, and I don't see anybody from the administration here to listen to these comments and to listen to the dialogue that we're having.
Collins here.
Collins here, okay, and hopefully, we're taking some notes, because this is important. This is, you know, people on the streets, people who do the work, people who are affected by this every single day. And Lori's right, it, it, we have to demand every single day that the politics be taken out of this. I've said it before, people that I represent really don't care who's red and who's blue. They want their community safe. They want people off the street and safe. And so I guess I'm, I'm just, you know, adding to Lori, this is huge, and, and we're taking this, it's heartbreaking, and I think it keeps a lot of us up at night. I appreciate what Hope House does and Catholic Charities and Family Promise. We can't forget those people, but we have to kind of sit as leaders and open up our ears and our doors and sit down with the administration and have these discussions. And I don't think, I mean, they're not happening on, on, that I see. So I will pledge to listen and to do what I can to make some positive changes, but this is important, and I plan to support it, and I'm grateful that Council President Beggs put this together. The amount of emails that I've gotten over this, and I haven't had one that said, oh, go ahead and do it. I've had so many community members say, you can't lose sight of the people who have been providing services for as long as Hope House and others have been providing services. Please don't forget about them, and I don't want to forget about any of you. So let's keep it moving, let's work on a regional approach, and I will commit that I will keep moving this forward in my heart and in my mind, and get people talking, and get a place that we can move forward that we're proud of.
Any other comments? Councilmember Mingle.
Yeah, a lot of things have, have been said, and I do want to acknowledge Colin and also Kim McCollum, our new NHHS director. Thank you for being here. But yeah, on, on this, it's not, when it comes to homelessness services, and Council President Beggs and Cathcart and I were in a meeting with the mayor and the service providers, and I said something very similar, which is, it's not a question of want, right? We want to fund all of these providers, we want to fund all of these services. It's not a question of want or desire to, to help provide this service and these many very good and very necessary services in the, in the city. The question is, you know, are the dollars there? Do the dollars exist? Because the Houston model has been mentioned a lot. Houston uses zero general fund dollars in their, in their homelessness response, zero. That's important to know, because this council and this administration have both committed to tens of millions of dollars from general fund dollars to go to this, either, or not necessarily general fund dollars, but dollars that are coming from ARPA or other, other different areas, where we're spending a significant amount of money on this. It's not, it's not a question of want, it's a question of, do the dollars exist for us to be able to do this? Now, again, on the $1590, which, which I, again, totally, wholeheartedly agree with, we need a significant amount of low-income housing, and we need it quickly, and so we need to use those dollars there. But if we're going to continue to provide, to provide shelter services to those that this council has tasked the administration with serving, when it hits a certain temperature, we have to provide shelter space to everybody. The amount of providers that we have now, and including Trac, we still don't have enough shelter beds to provide shelter for everybody in inclement weather conditions. And so if we take that $7 million that, you know, the administration has proposed to put towards homelessness services to help us provide spaces for people to transition out of homelessness, that $7 million still doesn't cover all the asks that we've been given. It's, it's not a question of want, it's a question of where are the dollars? The thing that I do agree, I'm going to be supporting this resolution as well, because I do want to acknowledge those who have been faithful partners to this city and to this community for a very long time. I do believe that they deserve to be funded first. Now the question just becomes, where do we find the funding for the other services that need to be provided? Because we can't, we can't abandon our current providers. There is, there is just more need than money to go around. You know, the, the email that we got from VOA, you know, was basically, hey, we need $2.5 million, we're closing our doors. We don't have $2.5 million that just lays around waiting for something, you know, like this. And so we have ARPA dollars now, and the thing that I really appreciated about this resolution was that it was like through 2023, because we are all working on regional approaches. Council President Beggs and I, and, and again, some others have been in some conversations on how do we help to create this, this regional approach, which is absolutely necessary. We do need our, our areas around to pitch in, because Spokane is bearing the burden for, for really Eastern Washington, because we are the, the hub that has the services provided, and so would like to ask the county, would like to ask the cities around us, we do need help, we are bearing the burden for, for Eastern Washington. It's unfair what Spokane is being asked to do, and we need, we need our, our partners to help. I hope that we can get those partnerships to where we can get the dollars necessary to fund all these programs, because there's more need than dollars.
Councilmembers, respond.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I am also going to support this, and I'll, since Councilmember Lukerson is not here, I'll invoke what she says often, is that we're very frustrated that we got to this place in the first spot. Trac was brought to us piecemeal, and we kept asking over and over and over, what's the total cost? What's the total package? First, it was the lease, then it was the operator, then it was the services. We never had the full picture, and now we're in a situation where we have a new shelter stood up, and we can't afford our current shelter providers, and it's a situation that was brought to us from the administration in pieces. And so I think that's very frustrating. We've been asking for a regional approach, we've been asking to work on this for a long time, looking for leadership to get that done, glad that there's efforts being made that way. So we're in a tough spot right now, and hopefully, we can figure that out quickly.
All right, prepare to vote.
I can say anything? No.
It's all been said. All right, that passes six to zero. And we don't have any first reading ordinances or special considerations. We do have two hearings. The second one is going to be on the budget. The first one is our annual comprehensive plan amendments, and what we're going to do is have Ms. Fister read them, and then have a presentation of that from staff for everyone, and then we'll take testimony on that.
And when do I have this?
After she reads them, before we get the presentation from staff.
H1, hearings on comprehensive plan amendments. Final reading ordinance is C 36310 through C 36316. A final reading ordinance, C 36310 relating to application files, Z 21-280 Complimenting Map, LU1 Land Use Plan Map of the city's comprehensive plan from residential 410 to residential 1530 for approximately 19.01 acres, located at 440 West Cora Avenue, parcel 35064.3612, 516 West Cora Avenue, parcel 35064.3613, 3426 North Pole Street, parcel 35063.2005, and 139 West Gray Court, parcel 20... Parcel 20, or excuse me, 35064.3801, and amending the zoning map from Residential Single Family RSF to Residential Multi-Family RMF and Residential Multi-Family 55-Foot Limit RMF-55. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval. B final reading ordinance, C 36311 relating to application file Z 21-281 Complimining Map LU1 Land Use Plan Map of the City's Comprehensive Plan from Residential 10-22 General Commercial for approximately 1.6 acres located at 514 South Freya Street, Parcel 3522, 2.4802, 510 South Farrell Street, Parcel 35222.4702, 514 South Farrell Street, Parcel 35222.4703, 515 South Farrell Street, Parcel 35222.4815, 519 South Farrell Street, Parcel 35222.4814, 520 South Farrell Street, Parcel 35222.4704, 3428 East Fifth Avenue, Parcel 35222.4701, 3502 East Fifth Avenue, Parcel 35222.4817, and 3512 East Fifth Avenue, Parcel 35222.4816, and amending the zoning map for Residential Two-Family RTF to Community Business 55-Foot Height Limit CB55. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval. C final reading ordinance, C 3612 relating to application file Z 21-282 Complimining Map LU1 Land Use Plan Map of the City's Comprehensive Plan from Residential 410 to Center and Corridor Transition for approximately 6.04 acres located at 2402 East 31st Avenue, Parcel 35331.0017, and 2502 East 31st Avenue, Parcel 35331.0014, and amending the zoning map from Residential Single Family RSF to Mixed Use Transition Zone CC4. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval. D final reading ordinance, C 36313 relating to application file Z 21-283 Complimining Map LU1 Land Use Plan Map of the City's Comprehensive Plan from Residential 10-20 to Residential 15-30 for approximately .95 acres located at 2531 and 2533 East 27th Avenue, Parcel 35284.0307, 2537 and 2539 East 27th Avenue, Parcel 35284.0308, 2603 and 2605 East 27th Avenue, Parcel 35284.0309, 2609 and 2611 East 27th Avenue, Parcel 35284.0310, and 2621 and 2623 East 27th Avenue, Parcel 35284.0174, and amending the zoning map from Residential Two-Family RTF to Residential Multi-Family RMF. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval. E final reading ordinance, C 36314 relating to application file Z 21-284 Comp Amending Map LU1 Land Use Plan Map of the City's Comprehensive Plan from Residential 410 to Office for approximately .45 acres located at 801 West Francis Avenue, Parcel 36312.0216, 6228 North Monroe Street, Parcel 36312.0822, and 6211 North Wall Street, Parcel 36312.0503, and amending the zoning map from Residential Single Family RSF to Office Retail 35-Foot Height Limit OR-35 and Office 35-Foot Height Limit 0-35. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval. F final reading ordinance, C 36315 relating to proposal files Z 22-097 Complimining Map TR5, Proposed Bike Network Map of Chapter 4 of the City's Comprehensive Plan for Various Public Rites of Way Citywide. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommends approval. G final reading ordinance, C 36316 relating to proposal files Z 22-098 Complimining Map TR12 and Chapter 4, Arterial Network Map of the City's Comprehensive Plan for Arterial Network Citywide, amending the text of Chapter 4 of the Comprehensive Plan discussing the US 195 Corridor and amending the Arterial Street Map in Spokane Municipal Code 12.08.040. By a vote of seven to zero with one abstention, the Plan Commission recommends approval.
All right. I know. And I know Councilmember Kinnear has some language that she wants to do, but I think technically, we would need to suspend the rules to allow that. So is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of amendment? Councilmember Cathcart?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, the rules are suspended. I believe you have an amendment.
I do. And I just want to preface this with listening to the Lincoln Heights neighborhood and understanding their concern about number C. So with Kevin's recommendation, I would like to amend ordinance C 36312 to also amend map TR5. Oh, Henley, could you put up that map?
I have it. I'll have it one second.
Okay. TR5 of the Comprehensive Plan to designate the portion of South Altamont from East 34th Avenue northward to its termination as a bike-friendly route and East 33rd Avenue from South Altamont eastward to Southeast Boulevard as a shared-use path. This would essentially add the street to the Comprehensive Plan map, and that would require another amendment to change it, effectively move the unofficial footpath that exists on private property to the north into city right-of-way where it belongs, and then clearly highlight the need for a pedestrian bicycle-friendly connection in this location. And again, I would add that, listening to the neighborhood, they had other asks, and unfortunately, you don't get everything you want. But I think this is a good compromise to make sure that we are continuing our quest to make our neighborhoods that are in centers and corridors bike and pet friendly. So Kevin, is there anything I need to add?
No, ma'am. That sounded great.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment and circulated earlier today indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, we've got that amendment. And now we're ready for your presentation, Kevin.
All right. Well, now that I'm all the way at the end of my presentation, give me just a second to go back to the beginning. This is called a fast preview. There we go. Good evening, Council President, members of the councils. Good to see you again. It's been a whole hour and a half since you've had to listen to me, so I appreciate your time. We are today bringing you your annual Thanksgiving present, which is our suite of comprehensive plan amendments. These are a combination of city-sponsored amendments and five that were submitted by members of the public and property owners. So I'll go through some very quickly. I will go through some preliminary information, and then we'll start presenting the individual applications to you. And of course, we're always here for questions, and I believe the applicants have signed up to speak as well. As you recall, this is a lengthy process. It's about 14 months long that all of these amendments go through. The, we took applications last October. They've gone through a docketing process where they are selected, whether they will be added to the work program or not. They go through an agency comment period during which we do a lot of the topic scoping. That's when things like traffic studies are, are figured out and, and some of the jurisdictional issues that come up. And then we have a lengthy public comment period for 60 days during which Plan Commission holds several hearings. And of course, we take comments throughout that period. And then Plan Commission holds a hearing. They've held a hearing on every one of these, and you'll see the recommendations in your packets. And ultimately, it comes to you for the final decision. And that's where we are today with seven ordinances for your consideration. You have been given a small library of reading materials from us, and I apologize, every year, I think it gets a little thicker. But you do have a, the Plan Commission findings and conclusions from their hearing. You have a staff report from Casey and myself, who have gone through the, with everything with a fine-tooth comb and tried to provide you with as much information as possible. And in those staff reports, you found there were written comments from the public, written comments from agencies where appropriate. We've provided you a list of relevant comp plan policies and basically all of the materials that we used and that the Plan Commission considered during their decision. You've also, on a number of these, received additional comments. Some of these were with the original on-base application packet that we gave you. Some you have received by email since that time, but you've gotten everything that we have received. And then here and there, there was a little additional information to answer certain questions, including an info packet on, on each one that kind of summarized where we are. And so let me apologize again for the sheer amount of reading, but I'm glad you were able to receive all of that and review it. Your options going forward and under, under the municipal code are pretty simple. You can vote to approve these. You can vote to continue consideration. I do ask, or I do like to remind you, though, that if we, if you decide to hold one for a continued hearing for another day, these do have to be completed by December 31st, or they will kick over into next year's program, which means they'll have to wait a year. And so we, obviously, we try to avoid that as much as possible. You can remand these applications to Plan Commission, especially if you have a question for Plan Commission, a significant change to the project. A couple of years ago, we, we did that when council had a question about a zoning, zoning designation that hadn't come up before. It had to be remanded. You can modify the proposals, which you just have done for one of them, but you do have that ability under the SMC. And of course, you can always vote to deny. Please note that anything, any of these that you do deny, they won't be able to come back right away for reconsideration. They have to, they have to wait. So the docket this year that was selected by you back in March, I believe, was seven applications. We have five applications that are all private applications submitted by local property owners or their agents representing changes to the land use plan map in Chapter 3 of the Comprehensive Plan. And whenever we change the land use plan map for efficiency sake and understanding, we also change the official zoning map, which is actually part of the municipal code. But they're done together as one product in this case. And then there are two citywide applications that, that's how we indicate those that actually came from city departments. One of those is changes to the map TR5, which is the bike network map. There's, I believe, 13, 14 changes this year. That's one we frequently do adjust as conditions change. And then the final one is some amendments to map TR12, which is our arterial street map, and that one is in various locations throughout the city. So the ones on the map here with the teeny-tiny little labels that I promised to make bigger next time are, those are the land use plan map amendments. So those are the ones we're going to go through first. Any questions on the process or on the materials before I go into the nitty-gritty? All right. So the first one we have for you today is ordinance C 36310, previously known as File 21280COM. All of these get a file number so that, one, we can keep track of everything, but also it helps, I think, the public sometimes understand which one we're talking about. So this one is 280. It is located on West Cora Avenue. It comprises two entire parcels and itty-bitty teeny-tiny pieces of two other parcels. And I, I will show those to you in the next map. Ultimately, the change here would be to only, to 19.1 acres of the city. Plan Commission considered this one and various, actually multiple comments that they received on this. Their recommendation was for approval. However, the applicant originally requested 75-feet height limit on this. Plan Commission felt that 55 was more acceptable, and so their recommendation is conditioned on that. The map changes that we're looking at for this one is a land use plan map designation for the, for the, from residential 4 to 10. That's four to 10 units per acre. That's our lowest density residential zoning, or residential land use. And it would update that to residential 15 to 30. That's our mid-range, our residential kind of middle-range think apartments, three-story apartments, not high-rise apartments necessarily. Again, it depends on the amount of land. But you'll also see on these maps, and I tried very hard to show how tiny these little areas were, but there are slight areas to the west, in the parcel to the west, there's a strip of land about 20 feet wide. And the parcel to the east, there's a strip of land about 15 feet wide. They kind of got left out of the zoning when this was originally platted. And so this would clean that up as well so that we'd have one solid band of residential 15 to 30 from, from, from the west all the way to the east to this section here. The zoning would change at the same time. As I said, this is currently zoned residential single-family or single-family detached housing. This would update it to residential multifamily. Now, the properties to the east and the west have the, have the base maximum height of 35 feet. Those little strips of land would also be 35 feet. But the applicant for this, which is the, the two large parcels in the middle, has requested higher, a higher height limit. And that's why you'll see here, it says residential multifamily 55. That number indicates the maximum height. So this complies with the Plan Commission's recommendation. And that is the detail I have for you. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer it. Council President, would you like to just go straight through them?
Okay.
Any questions before I go on to the next application? All right. So the next one is ordinance C 36311, which corresponds to File 21281COM. This one is in east central. It's hard to see on the projector here, but this street on the right side is Freya, which means Thor's over here in the numbers that you can't see. During consideration of this proposal, the original proposal was just this one property on Freya, but the docketing committee recommended, and city council felt it was best, to look at these eight parcels as well to the west that are in the same situation. So this is nine parcels total. This one is the applicant's parcel. These here are technically a city-sponsored part of the proposal. We're looking at 1.6 acres, and Plan Commission voted to recommend approval of this. Currently, these nine parcels sit kind of surrounded by general commercial land use plan map designation. That's this red color here. They're yellow, which is residential 10 to 20. That's our second level of density for residential. The proposal would be to fold those into general commercial. Just as you see here, they would all become red. Now, general commercial land use doesn't always mean general commercial zoning. This is one of the few where we have a choice. And in this area around the Fred Meyer, around the Thor-Freyer couplet and what's between them, the land use designation is general commercial, but the zoning is CB or community business, which is just slightly less dense, has slightly different development requirements. In this case, the area around it is designated CB55 with a 55-foot height limit. And so the applicant has proposed to be the same, which is CB55. And the city-sponsored part of the proposal is also for CB55. So basically, this purply-violet color or lavender color you see is, would, would encompass all nine parcels. And any questions on Freya before I burn through the rest? So for the next three, I'm going to hand them off to Casey, who's, oh, sorry.
I would just say, we, maybe it's lilac instead of lavender.
Lilac, lilac is what I was trying to go for. You'd think I would have caught that, knowing where we are. Thank you, sir. All right, for the next one, next couple, I'm going to hand off to Casey, who's done the hard work on these three applications.
Good evening, Council President, council members. So the next ordinance we're discussing is C 36312, previously Z 21282 comp, locate along East 31st Avenue. The original application is on the left. It's the larger undeveloped parcel. It does have existing overgrowth. During the docketing process, the property across Southeast Boulevard was included. That is the South Hill Park and Ride that is owned by STA. They have provided comments supporting inclusion, like their inclusion into the proposal, but they have made it clear that they have no intention of abandoning the property. They submitted in comments that they plan on making improvements to the property to alleviate any concerns that the Park and Ride was going to go away. The overall area of change is 3.8 acres. So Plan Commission did recommend approval. However, they did change the proposal. Originally, the proposal was to look at residential 15 to 30 land use designation and residential multifamily zoning. Plan Commission has proposed looking at the CC transition land use and CC4 transition zoning, which we'll see shortly. So the existing land use plan map designation of both parcels is residential 4 to 10 dwelling units an acre. Again, the original proposal was go to residential 15 to 30. The Plan Commission has recommended the center and corridor transition area land use designation. The properties are adjacent to the Lincoln Heights District Center, so it'd be expanding the center zoning using the transition or land use using the transition. The existing zoning is residential single-family. And instead of going to residential multifamily, Plan Commission did recommend using the CC4 DC zoning. That is the transition zoning, again, with the district center. Before moving on, were there any questions? The next proposal is ordinance C 36313, previously Z 21283 comp, locate along East 27th Avenue. The original parcel is on the left over here. During the docketing process, the four additional parcels were included. All five parcels include duplexes. The overall area of change is .95 acres, and Plan Commission did recommend approval as proposed. The existing land use plan map designation is residential 10 to 20 dwelling units an acre. And the proposal is to go to residential 15 to 30 dwelling units an acre, expanding the land use that is adjacent. The existing zoning designation is RTF or residential two-family. And the proposal is to go to RMF or residential multifamily. Any questions on this proposal? Next is ordinance C36314, or Z21284 comp, locate along West Francis Avenue. The original application is, have the highlight on it, it's kind of the Tetris shape. During the docketing process, three additional parcels were included. The total area of change would have been about 1.65 acres. So Plan Commission did recommend approval. However, they did recommend removing one of the expansion properties. That is highlighted in yellow, that is a single-family residential home, and the owners did request being removed from the proposal. So Plan Commission did follow what they wanted and recommended removing them. The existing land use plan map designation, as you can see, this area has some split land use, and you'll see some split zoning. The northern portions of the properties highlighted have the office land use designation. The remaining of the parcels, including this parcel fully along Wall, has the residential four to 10 dwelling units land use plan map designation. And the proposal is to expand the office land use to the full length of the applicant's property, this expansion property. This expansion property, again, leaving the residential single-family home alone, so it is, it will remain a split land use property with the recommendation. The existing zoning designation, the applicant's parcel, the northern portion, is OR35 or office retail with a 35-foot height limit. The remaining two split properties, the one currently included and the one removed by Plan Commission, the northern portions are Office 35, and then the full property along Wall is fully residential single-family, as well as the remainder of the split properties. The proposal is to expand the adjacent zoning. So on the applicant's parcel, that would be expanding the OR35 designation, the full length of the property, expanding Office 35 to both of the added properties. And again, the single-family home that was removed, recommended to be removed by Plan Commission, would remain split zoned. Any questions on that proposal? Okay, so those are the last of the private applications. The next two are the citywide sponsored applications. So ordinance C36315, File Z22097 comp, this is the change to the map, map TR5, the proposed bike network city-sponsored map. Shouldn't just read from the slide, it's the proposed bike network map, again, city-sponsored. Plan Commission did recommend approval with reaffirming changes to Washington. There was discussion on whether changes along Washington should go forward or not. So Plan Commission did reaffirm keeping it in the proposal and calling Quinn Hurst is available if there are any questions on this proposal. Finally, is ordinance C36316, or File Z22, Z22098 comp. This is a change to map TR12. This is the arterial network map. The number of changes as to the road classifications, as Kevin said, the staff report and all the materials have been sent to council. Plan Commission did recommend approval of the majority of the changes. However, they did recommend removing G Street from consideration. And again, Inga Note should be available if there are any questions on this proposal.
All right. Great. Thanks, Casey. So we do have some testimony. We'll start out with Mary Robinson, and after Mary is going to be Carol Tomsik, and then Liam Taylor. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Council President Beggs and members of the council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Robinson. I am a retired Spokane Public School teacher and have lived in Spokane for a little over 30 years. My husband and I have lived in our home on West Alice for 17 years. We're directly across from the Faith Bible Church. I'm, I'm addressing the property on Cora, on West Cora. We've expected to see some kind of development since, you know, since we bought there. The vacant land is obvious. I feel a little guilty even complaining about housing at all after listening to the earlier testimony about some of the problems that we have in Spokane, so we do need housing. The, we were encouraged, originally, they had talked about Corbin cottages, and, you know, it was increasing the density and, but it sounded like it could be a doable thing. I personally fail to see how construction of high-density apartment complexes in a spot that doesn't have safe or efficient access to arterials. I fail to see how that's a good idea. Four new homes have recently been built on small lots within a, within a block of us, which are occupied by families with children. We're thrilled with our new neighbors. We were happy to see the infill, happy to see kids on bikes, but the addition of high-density housing on Cora and the traffic that it will create is dangerously putting our neighbors at risk. Serious consideration needs to be given to traffic slowing infrastructure to ensure the safety of pedestrians, as this is a walking neighborhood, and, and that's a doable, and I assume that that will be done. But how will the potentially hundreds of additional vehicles in this residential neighborhood with Corbin Park at its center avoid predictable traffic problems simply getting in and out of home several times a day? It's already a problem, especially in the winter, when the roads, you know, get plowed and you can't, you can't really drive through. From a personal perspective, I fear that the stand of trees on my property and my neighbor's garage will be sacrificed to put in sidewalks on the south side of Cora, which was mentioned by the developer at, at the planning commission, commission meeting, I believe. My personal investment in the rewilding of our urban forest has been considerable in work and cost, and this would be personally devastating, which I realize is a small problem. It's just that I'm hoping that we can all empathize with what it means when your home is so completely changed. I come from Orange County back in the 60s. I, I saw this, the orange groves disappear. Many older homes.
We're at the end of your time, but.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming down and testifying. Next is Carol Tomsik, and after Carol is Liam Taylor, and then Dwight Hume. And Liam and Dwight, you guys can come, come down getting ready.
Okay, hold on.
Hi, Carol.
Okay, I do want to thank you for the bicycle path, because that's been top, but I still have more asks, and I know. It goes, "I am requesting pedestrian-oriented streets, concurrent traffic calming, and a 35-feet height limit to be added as a condition to the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment at 31st. Our neighborhood council has kept our residents informed and involved in the lengthy process. Our residents are concerned about preserving the character of their neighborhood, keeping their streets safe from increased traffic, height limit concerns in preservation of green space, keeping Altamont a dead end, and the potential destabilization of an existing neighborhood. Pedestrian-oriented streets are necessary. The increased density will necessitate traffic-supported mixed-use development and less reliance on automobiles. We need safe, convenient, and quality crosswalk and bicycle crossings to our transit park and ride, and from our transit park and ride, and our district center. We want to be a safe, walkable, bicycle-friendly neighborhood. Concurrent traffic calming is necessary. The proposed density will necessitate traffic calming to accommodate the growth, such as lower speed limit and limited turning points on Southeast Boulevard. We need to effectively manage the existing throughway traffic on Southeast Boulevard from 29th to Regal while also keeping our pedestrian and bicycles safe. An increasing congestion on 31st and Southeast Boulevard will increase existing congestion on 29th and Southeast Boulevard and potentially deter the historic throughway traffic into our residential neighborhoods. We also want to safeguard the long-fought traffic calming in the Garden District. A 35-feet height limit is necessary. A center and corridor transition prioritizes residential over commercial, but the allowable height limit of 35 feet will change and destabilize the character of the existing neighborhood. It is not compatible with the existing houses. The parcel is elevated. A 35-feet height limit is consistent with the municipal code height standards designed to promote a reasonable building scale and relationship of one residence to another and to promote privacy for the existing neighborhood residences. 27th and Southeast Boulevard and Ray Street was updated as an arterial in 2019. A center line was added. Stop signs were added at Mount Vernon and Fifth Street. The traffic moves fast on the street. There are no sidewalks in front of the parcels on 27th. It is unsafe to walk on the street, especially where cars are parked and I'm closer to the center line, or to cross at 27th and Mount Vernon intersection. Sidewalks must be added as a condition with the approval of the amendment. I support the bicycle map amendments, particular bike map modification for a greenway on South Fifth Street from East 27th to East 35th. And I want to thank Colin Quinn Hurst for his support and his effort to keep our residents safe with greenways and protected bicycle paths. Thank you."
All right, got it done. Thank you.
Okay.
Liam Taylor, and after Liam Dwight Hume, and then Jim Greenup.
Okay, good evening, Council President and Council members. My name's Liam Taylor. I'm a land use planner here at Store, or excuse me, at Storehough Engineering here in Spokane, Washington. I'm the applicant's representatives for comp plan amendment Z21280 through 283 comp. On behalf of my clients, I would like to respectfully ask you to approve these ordinances as recommended by the Plan Commission, including the RMF-55 zone for 280 and the CC-4 zone for 282. I believe these map amendments are supported by the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, and although we are not proposing any development at this time, I'm confident that whatever comes to fruition will be an attractive and useful amenity to these neighborhoods. The desire to develop multifamily housing was the primer for these applications. By zoning these properties, our clients will have the potential to develop more residential dwelling units than they previously could. The ongoing housing crisis has been one of the most challenging issues the city has faced, and I believe every bit counts, including our fault for, excuse me, our four proposals. And I just would like to close by thanking Casey and Kevin at the city throughout these past 14, 13 months. They've been, their guidance has been impeccable, and it's just been a pleasure working with the neighbors, the planning staff, the planning commission, and yourselves, of course. And thank you for your time and consideration with these proposals. And if you have any last-minute questions, I'm more than happy to address them. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Liam. All right, Dwight Hume, and then Jim Greenup. Yeah, Dwight's first. Oh, I guess Jim's going first. All right.
Good evening. My name is Jim Greenup. I'd just like to ask for support of the project on Cora. I'm a member of the leadership team, and we were encouraged to bring about a proposal for rezone. We worked three years trying to work around some of the constraints of housing for residential, and with the complexities of the zone restrictions on setbacks, the hillside, and the narrowness and complexion of the property, it became very difficult to get everything that we needed and to use the land appropriately. So a year ago, when we submitted our proposal, we've defined excess property, not for the church, the church is 19 acres. We don't see that, it's all of that being housing at all. We do see the two ends having some influence on housing, and the reason the height limit was requested was because of the bank behind. I think I've referenced that before, and it gives us a little better position of going vertical than spreading out. And that's the hope. And we've heard many of the concerns, and we have those concerns too. We want to be a good neighbor, and we want to design a project that will be supportive of the neighborhood, supportive for the needs within the community, and complimentary for years to come. So with that, I just ask for your approval of the, of the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, for coming down. All right, Dwight Hume. Welcome, City Council.
Mr. President, I'm here on behalf of my client who has the rezone under item E. That is the one that fronts on Francis. A new office building was built there this summer. We're just east of the Wells Fargo at Monroe and Francis. Historically, I had done a special permit when those were permitted for, for parking for Wells Fargo, and, and I guess there was a similar one done for the dental office at Francis and Wall. What is typical of your docketing process is to look at the zoning map and see the, these little isolated non-conforming special permits and correct them when the opportunity is there, and that's exactly what the docketing committee did. That is to say, they said on Wells Fargo, add in the special permit land, take it out of residential, put it into office. And similarly, we initiated this application because we were allowed to go forward with the office building, except for this house 50 feet on post. And in similar fashion, immediately to the west of us, tangent to us, on Lincoln is this home that the owner asked, hey, take me out of this thing, I don't want to do it. However, what wasn't clear in the graphics on the map is that his home, his lot, like ours, is split down the middle. Half his house is in office zoning, half of it's in single-family. He just preferred not to be zoned. And what I'm saying, I had to come down here anyway for our piece, is put it back in. The zoning doesn't render the house non-conforming. It's already half office zoned. And I watched this year after year after year, when docketing committee says, staff, add this stuff in. What you're really doing is saying, staff, you don't mean it this way, but you're saying, staff, spend some time taking care of the notices and all the reports and yada, 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 for the parts that are city-initiated. You're wasting all of that to pull that one out. Clean it up, make it an even boundary, just like it's supposed to be, and leave it alone. It doesn't change a thing in terms of value, but it eliminates a future one-year walk to the podium if and when that guy wants to zone it. So amend your, your language accordingly to my recommendation and include his lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight, for coming down. That's the end of public comment. I'm going to take some council comment, but first, I just want to check, my preference would be to vote on all of these ordinances, 36310, all at the same time unless someone has an objection to it. I'll just save a little bit of time. But does anyone have any council commentary on these? All right. I just want to thank, they've been thanked, but thanks to the planning staff. You guys have worked super hard this year to usher us through that process. So thank you, and thanks to the applicants for moving us forward, and thanks to the public for testifying, giving us your views, not just tonight, but all the previous written comments as well. Prepare to vote. All right, those passed six to zero. That gets us to our final hearing.
H2, Continued Hearing on Proposed 2023 Budget Continued from November 14, 2022.
All right, and we have nine people, seven in person, it looks like, and two by video. And the first one is Brianna Dilts, followed by Karen Nielsen, and then Gwen Millie, it looks like. So Brianna, come on up. And if I called your name, Karen or Gwen, if you can make your way to the front row, just so it'll go a little quicker.
Hello, City Council President.
Yeah, welcome.
My name is Brianna Dilts, and I'm here with the Spokane Alliance. I'd like to acknowledge that everyone behind me wearing a yellow sticker is also with the Spokane Alliance. I'm here as a member of the Housing Equity Action Research Team, or HART. As many of you know, HART was one of the groups who helped get the original House Bill 1590 passed in 2020, and I'd like to thank you for your support today about preserving 1590 for its intended use. And I'm here today because I care about my community having access to safe, dignified, and affordable housing. For the last two years, I have worked in social services where the effects of the housing crisis are extremely apparent. I've worked with countless working families experiencing homelessness, many of whom are who, many of whom are still without a home for their family today because of the lack of affordability. There are funds at the city through 1590 that can be a part of housing. There are funds at the city through 1590 that can be a part of housing some of these families. The mayor's budget raids these funds for shelter services and is complicit in allowing these families to remain unhoused. The housing crisis has not only affected my professional life, but also my personal life. During the last few years, as rents have been rising, I've been privileged enough to have a stable place to stay with my family. Despite being safe from being displaced from my home, I witnessed the effects of the housing crisis on my friends and neighbors. I have a friend who is a store manager at a small business and a neighbor in West Central. She moved into a home with roommates to be able to afford the rent, but the landlord raised the rent with short notice and everyone was displaced. My friend had to move into an open room of a distant connection. It wasn't a home, but it was a place to stay. Seeing a friend in this position and supporting them through housing insecurity made me feel powerless. I also acknowledge that if it wasn't for the support that I have, it could have easily been me in that position without somewhere to go. In the two years since 1590 was passed, housing insecurity has only gotten worse in Spokane. The National Low Income Housing Coalition ranks Washington the sixth highest housing wage in the country. There is currently a 1.4% vacancy rate and a three-year waitlist for affordable housing in Spokane. There is simply not enough attainable housing for the people who call Spokane home, let alone affordable housing. City Council, U.S. City Council have the power to ensure that working families and people like my friend can afford, to find housing they can afford. I urge you all to vote against the mayor's proposed budget and preserve the 1590 funding for its intended use. That was championed by the people of Spokane and for the people of Spokane. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Karn Nielsen, and after Karn is Gwen, and then Luis Menriquez.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Karn Nielsen. I'm a member of the Spokane Alliance, Fuse, and Spokane Housing for All. And I'm really tired of our city, especially the mayor's office, suddenly realizing that we don't have enough housing as our temperatures drop every winter. It happens every winter, and all of a sudden we have a crisis and throw resources there. It's time to work towards long-term solutions instead of knee-jerk emergency measures. I supported the council's passing of a housing levy to go towards long-term viable solutions that address the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. No one that has any other options wants to live in a temporary shelter. All people want a safe place that they can call home. Rising rents and a vacancy rate of 1.4% in Spokane are forcing people into their cars and onto the streets. I have a friend that pays $1,300 for a tiny, one-bedroom apartment that's a 20-minute walk to a bus route. It's ridiculous. We need to build more low-income housing and provide rental assistance to keep people in their homes. Just because the mayor's office was unwilling or unable to take advantage of federal housing funds doesn't mean it's okay to raid our locally raised levy funds. As I understand it, the budget in front of this council proposes using all 7 million of low-income housing for the purpose of funding our shelter system. This would be detrimental to long-term solutions. It's time for Spokane to look forward and to stop applying Band-Aids. There are many affordable housing projects that are ready to move forward, save for the funding. Infrastructure is what the Spokane housing levy was passed for. Please don't approve a budget that raids the fund for operational expenses. If we never look ahead, we can never get ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karn. All right, Gwen, and after Gwen is Luis, and then Jane Nelson-Low. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Gwendolyn Miller. I have lived in Spokane pretty much my entire life. I'm here to speak on defense of the 1590 funds to go towards affordable housing and to speak on behalf of my story and my family's story. When we moved here, my mother had recently gone through a divorce. We were financially devastated due to it, and she had four children. It was just her and us, and we needed affordable housing, and we came here so that my mother could find a job. We came here when I was about 10 years old, and my mother managed to support us, all four of us, through four years of local Spokane colleges and colleges in the area by being able to provide us with a home that we could stay in so that we didn't acquire unnecessary debt and spend unnecessary amounts of money paying for a place to live. We were able to stay with her, and we were able to make it through college, become educated, and become people that can come here, have the free time to speak to you all the day. Without that, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be where we are. My siblings wouldn't be making the financial strides that they are making today and wouldn't be able to support their children the way they are. If we want to see this city grow into a larger, better, more accomplished city, we need to support affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. Luis, and after Luis is Jane, and then Onika Merleli. Might not be saying that right, but.
Hello, I am the regional organizer for the Health Equity Circle, which is a member of the Spokane Alliance, and I live in Spokane County. So the Health Equity Circle was proud and pleased to work with Spokane Alliance and many of you to pass 1590 because we have an affordable housing crisis in the city. And housing is a health issue, right? As a physician, a lot of our ability to care for people is severely, severely impacted if people don't have housing. But the solution to our crisis is not to take this money, raid this money from affordable housing, and put it towards homeless shelters. And I can speak on behalf of shelters because I am one of the co-founders of Street Medicine in Spokane. I have the honor and the privilege of filling my backpack with medical supplies and going out to take care of people living on the streets, in encampments, and in the shelters, including all the shelters that are at risk of closure right now. We have undoubtedly saved lives, and we have also watched people die while Mayor Woodward says that it is too easy to be homeless in Spokane. This proposal is as cruel as it is heartless, and I urge you to oppose it. So the question was asked, how do we pay for it? Well, working on the streets, what I can say is cynical and heartless is the amount of money the city uses to pay for and enforce the sit-and-lie ordinance while shelters are at risk of closing. The Street Medicine Program recognizes, is a recognition, that we aren't doing everything we can in medicine to care for our vulnerable citizens, and it is an attempt to do better. And I hope that the City Council will do similarly in its approach to homelessness and keep 1590 funds for their intended purpose and reconsider the way that we approach and criminalize homelessness. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Luis. Jane Nelson-Low, and then Onika, and then Jonathan Malahan.
My name is Jane Nelson-Low. I'm a retired Episcopal priest. I attend church at St. David's, which is a member of Spokane Alliance, and I live in the Emerson Garfield neighborhood. I've been a volunteer for quite some time at West Central Episcopal Mission, now West Central Abbey, where I encountered many homeless people who came to dinner, and some of those were people who had jobs, got to work on time every day, but they were living in cars. And it's much worse now than it was a few years ago, when on some of these incidents I remember. We thought it was a wonderful thing when 1590 passed, and we badly need a long view. We're much, too much involved in crisis management here, and we need to look ahead. We need to find the resources, and I strongly oppose diverting those funds to temporary measures. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Jane. All right. You're going to have to give me your whole name. No, go ahead. Introduce yourself. After that, it's Jonathan, and then Justice Puyan.
Okay. My name's Anna Comerkle. I'm a registered nurse here in the area, and I live in the neighborhood of Shiloh Hills in Spokane, so. And some of you have heard this from me before, some of you haven't, so I'll try and keep it brief. And it just simply comes down to this from kind of a nursing perspective, right? When you have a problem with an issue and we look at things, we try to approach it from a standpoint of primary prevention. What that means is, before there's ever a problem, we address it, right? That's the best time to do something, if you can. When you start to develop a problem, they call that secondary prevention, and you try to get in there and keep it from becoming a long-term issue, right? And then it kind of goes from tertiary to quaternary from there. Okay. So how this applies to this specific circumstance, I've lived in Spokane almost my whole life, except for when I was in the military, was still a resident, but was somewhere else. And I've kind of seen this cycle happen year after year after year after year after year for a really, really, really long time, where we take our assets and our funding and put it into emergency responses to a situation. What I envisioned maybe is a world where, what if this year, we just fixed, actually fixed, 5% of the problem? And maybe next year, we fix 5% of the problem, but you have to think and do things drastically differently than you do right now. I am opposed to using the funding that was proposed in the budget that was given to you all because it doesn't afford you the opportunity to do that. Again, I kind of go back to a nursing thing. When we work with our clients, if we don't try to get them healthy and move them along, we're called warehousing people, and it's a derogatory term, right? This shelter situation that they're asking funding for is a warehousing situation. Human beings need housing. And if we address that, 5% a year, in 20 years, you might have solved a problem that hasn't been able to be solved in the whole, almost 50 years I've been alive. So good luck to you. Thanks.
Thanks, Onika. Jonathan Malahan. And after Jonathan, we'll have Justice Puyan by video.
Good evening again, Council President, members of the council. I'm Jonathan Malahan. I'm the Chief Housing Officer for Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington. We provide over 2,700 permanent housing units for people across Eastern Washington, and as you know, we provide emergency shelter for our most vulnerable neighbors here in Spokane. We're speaking tonight against the idea of using 1590 funds to pay for emergency shelters. We absolutely understand the hard decisions that you're called on to make to support the many needs, and I know that the budget is tight. Using $1590 for emergency housing is the wrong policy. It's akin to selling your car to pay for gas, and it's even worse because every dollar of 1590 funds that you invest in permanent housing can be leveraged with $4 of state, federal, and private financing and funding for permanent housing production. There are projects today that are not moving forward but for the lack of local funding commitment so that they can be leveraged with public sources elsewhere. Right now, there are people sleeping in the house of charity who would be in permanent homes if they were available. We do need more for emergency housing so we can keep people safe and alive while we place them in permanent housing. I fully support that objective. Using 1590 funds to accomplish it is the wrong approach. So I appreciate your thoughtful time and consideration for alternate funding sources for emergency housing operations. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. All right, next up is Justice by video. Is he up there? Justice, welcome. The City Council. Can you hear us?
You're unmuted.
You're unmuted at our end, but we're not hearing you, Justice. All right, how about, is Puyan there? Oh, we hear one of you. Who's that? Puy?
I think I got mine working, too. I think I hear Puyan as well.
All right, well, then let's go with you first, Justice.
Hello, Council members. My name is Justice for All. You have the ability to shift away from ineffective and deadly forms of policing by ensuring funds go to services instead of towards tools of violence. How many police killings have happened this year? How many can be prevented if a proper response team was set? Per capita, Spokane has stepped up to the second deadliest police force. We have made baby steps towards a mental health response team. Many cities have moved to alternative forms to police, and the impacts are shown through the data.
Counsel President, point of order, I think this is on a different issue. Oh, no, it's on budget. It's on budget. It's pending.
The impacts of our current forms of policing are shown through the lawsuits against the city regardless if the Spokane County Prosecutor claims that every police shooting is justified or not, which this prosecutor has. We need to fully fund a unarmed behavioral response team and fund a dispatch triage of mental health providers and EMTs to be sent out when there's a psychiatric emergency. We need to expand and reassign at least two or more DV officers back to the DV unit, Domestic Violence Unit, and fund domestic violence response prevention, including education materials. Speaking of education materials, our community lacks language access for our growing diverse population. Translation of materials and links access to translators. It is the law, is it not the law, that language access be available? So fund it so it gets used. Regardless of what Spokane officers believe, what is passed by Washington state legislation becomes the law. No one gets to throw a temper tantrum and not do their job because of regulation. Funding a tracking system for dispatchers and police to enforce accountability for what calls are addressed and remove the choice in which incidences are response to. Dispatch, performance review, and track location will remove the ability to choose which incidents are responded to by creating metrics that track officers not responding to calls that their duty requires them to respond to. Don't buy any more Teslas or e-bikes, tasers, and toys. Let's not fall behind the rest of the country when it comes down to our police tactics, and let Spokane lead the way into improved safety and security for all of us, not some of us. The enforcement of nuisance laws has nothing to create a cycle of desperation as well. I do agree with everything Dr. Luis says as well, and thank you for my time.
Thanks, Justice. All right, Puyan, are you there?
There.
Yep. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Beck and Council members. I'm Puyan. I serve as the co-chair of the GFC OCLEI work group, and also I am on the board of Greater Spokane Progress. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the proposed 2023 city budget in support of the Office of Civil Rights, Equity, and Inclusion. I want to express my gratitude again for the unanimous vote by the council members last year that led to the creation of the Office of Civil Rights, Equity, and Inclusion. The vote you cast demonstrated to our communities that you listened to our wishes and understood the work that needs to be done for Spokane to become a truly inclusive and equitable city for all. Budget is the true testimony to the values and priorities that our city holds. We are getting close to the end of the hiring process for the director position. It is important that the director and the staff will have the necessary resources from the beginning so that they are set up for success. We thought that the proposed budget for 2023 only provides funding for the three positions and does not include the essential operational costs and funding for community outreach, training, and professional development. We ask that funding should be included in the OCLEI budget to cover expenses such as funding to host community forums, including printing, mailing, advertising, and interpreters for ASL and other languages; funding for tabling at community events, including Pride Festival and Unity in the Community, et cetera; funding to translate outreach material and website content with the goal of funding language assets throughout our department; funding for the director to travel to national and regional conferences, including those hosted by the government Alliance on Race and Equity, to cultivate professional networks and exchange ideas with those in similar positions; funding for staff to attend and travel to professional development trainings, including as well as local and virtual trainings and training provided by national organizations; and finally, funding to bring trainers, lift experience experts, and workshop facilitators to provide professional development... to provide professional development and continuing education for city staff. This funding would successfully launch the work of the OCLEI along with the budgeted three positions, with the goal of funding a minimum of six positions as recommended in our community proposal by 2024 to implement the full scope of the office to investigate discrimination and hate crimes, provide education and training, lead inclusive community engagement, and take intentional steps to advance equity through assessment and accountability in using an equity lens throughout the city. It is critical for the director and the staff to have adequate funding so that they can get to work right away and establish their credibility with our community from the start.
Puy, that's the end of your time, Puy. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing tonight. That's the end of the public testimony on the budget hearing. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we continue till 11:28.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of continuing to November 28th, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the budget hearing is continued until next Monday, and we have five people for open forum. Hartman Hatter, Anton Vallone, Crystal Burgett, Will Hewlings, and Justice Forall again by video. So Hartman Hatter, also known as Rick Bowkuk, having a little fun with us?
Yeah, that goes back to your two weeks ago.
Yep.
Anyway, I want to talk briefly about, this is Native American Heritage Month, and of course, it's been cold all month, and I managed to be able to put one picture out there of Chief Tanasket. And of course, my hand just about froze to the sidewalk. So if you get a chance to go check out Chief Tanasket. Also, on Native American heritage art, I do that pretty much all year round, and I got, just sharing with you, I got permission at YWCA and YMCA to do art there, missing and murdered Indigenous women in YWCA and Native American Indigenous people at YMCA. So, and it's kind of like carte blanche, you know? I mean, there's, I don't need permission, I just do it. And so if you, if you ever do go to YMCA, like when the weather gets a little bit better, you'll see some really good art. Like right now, they're just faded, you know, they're still there. So if you get a chance, like in the springtime, go check out the art at YWCA, YMCA, and give tribute to the Native Americans here. I do a lot of the art, like I've done Chief Joseph, Sitting Bull, Red Cloud, and I can't remember all the other names. I can't even pronounce some of the names anyway, but it's a lot of tribute to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And after Anton is Crystal, and then Will.
Hello, everybody. Excuse me. Okay, I am going to say something about LGBTQ, the incident that happened in Denver, and what the media said, you know, that it was a hate crime, you know? And I don't think so, you know? I mean, it's like, there's, it's, I think what happened is that we politicized everything, you know, like the mayor is against what, because these are Democrats, and I'm a Republican, I'm against that. And I, and as far as solving, we're trying to look at ways how to solve, even the housing here in Spokane. There is a lot of damage done, and it's kind of like, it's hard to work through that, and I do appreciate you guys doing your best. Yeah, and they did this, and it's like, if we can start, if each one of us in this room can start working on our conscience, on ourselves, and on our children, that will probably change, alter the future. The damage, it's kind of like, the kid is only 22 years old that they're saying is a hate crime, okay? I mean, when you, when you build, when you politicize something and you say this is our enemy, our opponent, you don't know what you're doing to that child, you know? Like you're putting a division, but yet, at the same time, we stand here and we pledge allegiance to the flag for this country, you know? I think this is something that we need to really have a deep thought within ourselves and the people that we contact with to change the narrative of what's going on. I mean, it's, we're in a mess right now. I'm being honest with you guys, you know? We're in a big mess, you know, it's the homeless, you know? Where does it stop? You know? But I do appreciate what you guys are doing, and you guys are doing a beautiful job, and I do support you guys, you know? Just take that Republican hat off, take that Democrat hat off, you know, and work together, you know, and things can be resolved, okay? Yeah. Quit politicizing everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Anton. Crystal, after Crystal's will, and then Justice.
Hello, Crystal Yosquazam Burgett, Spokane. I live downtown. MAC Movement, working mother of three. I am coming to you about a few things. I'm trying not to mention the B-word, budget. Recently, I've had some difficulties myself covering my own brand, and I faced an eviction. What's really scary about this is I was told by numerous organizations that they were lacking the funding or they're not serving within the city limits. Carl Maxi Center did come through to assist me and help get me caught up, but it's so temporary for so many of us that are going through a survival mode just to stay in our homes. I'm working nonstop, so it's just a temporary fix. I think that it's important that we acknowledge what's going on, where we're lacking, and how difficult it is for those of us that are just trying to survive. It's just as equally as important taking care of our shelters. So many of us are just a paycheck away from homelessness ourselves. When I'm talking about shelters, I mean, we need to pay attention and assist the smaller organizations and spaces where citizens can get the care and advocacy they deserve, spaces that maintain their humanity by ensuring compassionate care, access to cleanly and sanitary resting spaces and bathing spaces, ensuring that citizens have access to their medications are just a few of the areas that are critical in providing equitable opportunities for our houseless neighbors, which are not accessible in warehouse shelters. On a separate note, about a month ago, a 14-year-old girl named Marisol Caroiz Lopez went missing. There was never an alert or a broadcast that I know of, and if there was, it wasn't enough. We need to do more to protect our young people. She is missing. This case is being shoved under the rug, and the clock is ticking. She's 14 years old, Marisol Casares Lopez, missing since October 26th, last seen leaving Rogers High School. So, thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Will?
Crystal, could you, could you get us that name again?
Welcome, Will.
Hello. Hi. Sorry, she's gonna play a video for you guys. Sorry. Okay, my name is Will, and I live downtown Spokane, and this has concerned me for the last couple of years, and I've actually spoke about this, just, what, two weeks ago? So I'm gonna speak out, I'm gonna speak out every time. I spoke to Bingo about this the other day when I met with him in the morning. But I feel as if I'm getting run around, especially because somebody that's on City Council is on the board, Spokane Arts Board, but I was told I gotta contact Melissa Huggins, and please don't hand me stuff like this. The card says, "Help support your local artists, or we will riot." So I'm talking about this. I live downtown. 2020, May of 2020, I got detained, me and another friend, because we were observing people destroying downtown, people that supported Black Lives Matter, okay? I got told, I got put in curfew twice. So I come here and I talk about this, and it's simple. For two years, I've been to the Downtown Spokane Partnership, I've been to City Council. It even says it's sponsored by you guys. So the reason why me, I'm making this a big deal is because Patriot Front graffiti appeared in Gonzaga and on the Monroe Street Bridge. I don't know nothing about them, that group, but guess what? It was fixed right away. But this, white silence, like if we play this, I mean, I'm not even white, I'm a minority, and I'm, this offends me. And I'm not gonna fucking play my, oh, excuse my language. So I'm just offended that this is up on our wall, okay? Downtown for two years, said something about it, Ms. Stratton's on their board, I'm told I gotta call Melissa to talk about this. She ignores my calls, and of course, she's not gonna talk to me about this, because that's something that they support. I think it should be fair and equal. We shouldn't have political stuff. I could find that kind of racist, actually, which I do. So I wish this would be taken down. And I talked to Bingo, and I hope he acts, or maybe Cathcart. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Will. And so, next is Justice Forall. Let us get the screen back up just a sec, Justice.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you. You can start whenever you want.
Four days ago, the City of Spokane Municipal Government released a video with the description, "Property and violent crimes within a quarter mile of Camp Hope dramatically increased during the encampments of rapid growth." This video is extremely biased with flashy chalk graphics and dramatic music. It conveniently didn't have information of the $500,000 given to the Health Foundation to give the residents of Camp Hope access to housing and other services, which will lead to the organic closure of Camp Hope, and that will be better for the Camp Hope and the neighboring community. Service provider is already there at Camp Hope as well, and that was not included. They're not reporting on the DOL coming, or DOH coming to Camp Hope to get people identified and social security cards, but what we do see is extremely biased and slandered reporting, purposely leaving out all this information, because it wants to be politically slandered. The intention of the video is to increase the fear of people against, of Spokane, against our unhoused neighbors. I want to really know who signs off on these videos. I would like to know how y'all think it represents Spokane. The rising housing cost is directly related to rising homelessness, and we know that that's increased so much in Spokane. Currently, only a fraction of the necessary beds are needed to provide shelter to our unhoused community are available. In 2021, over 100 unhoused people were forced to move from their camp in front of Spokane City Hall in Snowfell. Several people moved from City Hall to its current location on the Washdott land, known as Camp Hope. At its peak, it had over 600 people. City of Spokane Mayor, the City of Spokane Mayor Woodward's administration, the Spokane Board of County Commissioners, and the Spokane Police Department, the Sheriff's Office have all been opposed to Camp Hope as far as going, as fines issuing, threats of removal, fear mongering, and refusing access to water and electricity on the land. The people who live on Camp Hope are successfully accessing resources that improve their personal circumstances and material conditions, not just for a night but long term. Allowing Camp Hope to reach an organic closure is best for the unhoused people living there and the greater Spokane community. The City of Spokane should be working to help those who are experiencing homelessness instead of punishing them. The state officials have outlined the steps that are needed to take for the camp to remove, which y'all know. We additionally ask you follow the Smith &amp; Barberie Progressive Funds for adequate shelters, which I would not say that trench shelter is reaching up to that, and that means establishing a housing plan that includes a significantly increased volume of affordable housing for both the transitioning out of homelessness and a preventative measure to ensure more residents don't become homeless. Research successfully, sorry, research successful cities, Houston and countries, Finland, that have reduced houses populations in their own communities with these approaches employ the proven strategies. Instead of a warehouse of 250 people, open smaller locations that focus on needs of various groups of single women, couples, families, LGBTQ+,
We're at the end of your time.
etc. Ensure that the baseline of high.
Okay.
Sorry, Dan.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justice. All right, that brings us to the end of open forum. Thanks, everyone, for coming down and sharing. Thanks also, whoever gave us nice, encouraging cards. Thank you, sunshine. It's lit up my day. We don't have any city council on Thursday due to the holiday. We'll be back Monday. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else, and I hope you can enjoy some quality time with friends and family. We're adjourned.